Stand, remove cover and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Portia Stanis, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of council members absent and Becca's here somewhere, so she'll return, but first item up is informational reports and included on the agenda is Amanda with an SEDC update, so I'll turn it over to you ma'am.
Hello? We good? Good evening Mayor and Council, Amanda Anglin, Sturgis Economic Development. Just wanted to give you a brief quarterly update for the first three quarters of the year, and you should all have a copy of this packet. I won't go over the sales tax and building permit numbers because I think you're all aware of the increases we're seeing there, but as far as businesses go in Sturgis, we're up 14 new businesses this year, which is really good to see, and for a total of 44 new jobs created in our community. We've seen some growth in the industrial park with the Sampson Building being sold. That business brought about 25 new jobs to Sturgis. They were here earlier on in their startup, they were incubated by another business in Sturgis, and then they moved on to the Black Hawk Somerset area and outgrew that space and then came back to Sturgis and filled that 45,000 square foot building, so we're thankful that they are here. In addition to that, we've done some renovations in the incubator that's in the industrial park. We had one business in there and then the school occupied one of the units for their machine tool technology classroom. And the one business that was occupying three units, they left the building, so we did some renovations there. The original concept for that building was to be four units for four separate businesses, and so we have done the renovations to create that or to modify that building to accommodate four different businesses. The school was seeing some staffing issues, so they moved the classroom back to the high school, which I think, although we're losing that in the industrial park, I think it's better for the program because more students will be able to participate, because there was a challenge with, you had to be able to drive your own vehicle from the school to the industrial park to participate, and now that won't be an obstacle for those students that want to participate in that class, which I think is better overall for the program. So now we have, the building is filled with four businesses in the industrial park, I'm kind of skipping around here in my pamphlet, but we now have a plumber, an electrician, a small firearms manufacturer, as well as a heating and cooling business that will be, the heating and cooling business will be moving into the incubator here in December. So it's really good to see that that building is full and the, I didn't even have to advertise for that space, so these are people that I had talked to that were looking for space and we were able to make it work for them. Had I advertised for that space, I think we would have gotten a lot more inquiries than we would have been able to fill. So that leads me into our next project, which is our multi-unit condo building that we're working on. We have some long narrow lots in the industrial park that aren't, people haven't been interested in them, I will say. So what we want to do is that picture on the bottom right-hand corner, that building is actually located in Spearfish, but that's kind of the concept that we're looking at right now. We're working with an architect. We've narrowed it down to about a 1,600 square foot unit with an office and a small lobby area, and it looks as though we could potentially put anywhere between like 14 to 18 units on this two-acre property that we have in the park. So we want to start with one building and then see what the interest is and then hopefully keep going from there to fill that need of the trades industries and those smaller businesses looking for that type of space, which is really what I'm seeing as of the last year or so, that's what businesses are looking for. So we're in the process of getting those plans drafted. Hopefully we can go to bid here shortly after the first of the year and maybe start construction in the spring on at least one, one, four, three or four unit building to accommodate those business needs. So those are pretty much the, a couple of the big projects we've been working on. As everyone knows, we did the groundbreaking for the senior living project and that is moving along. There's activity happening on that property, which is really good to see. We've also been trying to help our businesses tackle some of the workforce shortages, and in July, we did the job info pickup day, which then morphed into the workforce opportunity wall that's located at the chamber, and we currently have about 30 businesses participating in that, and that is just where community members or anyone looking for an open position can go to the chamber office and see what is available in our community, and there's still room for more businesses to participate if they would wish. And then a third piece to that is SEDC was recently awarded some grant funding from the Governor's Office of Economic Development for marketing as well as relocation incentives, and so that totals to be about $50,000. We have $10,000 in marketing, which we will, the program is geared towards marketing to people outside of the state of South Dakota to bring them in to work in our state as well as live here. And there's a threshold there where the positions have to be more than $20 an hour, and so we received $10,000 worth of grant funds and then SEDC is going to match that, so we're working with the Governor's Office of Economic Development and Lawrence and Schiller to do a marketing campaign outside of South Dakota in the surrounding states. And then the other $40,000 of that is for relocation incentives, and so that number came about by, I contacted some of our businesses that are needing assistance and they said, hey, yep, I'd be willing to participate, I would be willing to give $1,500 to help someone relocate to South Dakota, and then that grant funding will help match that. So I do have a list, we are currently in the process of working through how that's going to roll out, and I'm hoping to see that done in the beginning of the year, and then we can start hopefully helping another piece to bring some more employees into our much-needed workforce. Seems to be a countrywide issue at this point, but we're trying to do what we can to help our local businesses. Our movie theater project is back up and running again, so thank you for the use of the community center and the upgrades to the screen and stuff. I've really seen an increase in attendance. We started that in October, and then I threw out a Facebook page specifically for the movies, which I think has increased the attendance, so I'm really happy to see that. We are partnering with our local businesses to help sponsor those movies and help to cover the cost of that, so you can see the sponsorship opportunities there for that. Otherwise, I think that's really all I wanted to cover. I did include in your packet, we had our semi-annual meeting of our investors at the middle of October, and I had asked the participants to answer a few questions and get involved in the conversation, and I included the harvest document in your packet with the questions and then the answers that came and some of the feedback they received, so feel free to read through that and use that in your own planning or however you want to use that information moving forward, it's open and free to be used, so anyone have any questions?
Thanks Amanda.
Thank you. And I brought some copies, if anyone wants to have a paper copy, they're on the desk.
Good stuff for sure. Item six is announcements and praise. We got one listed, but I'd like to take a moment and pray if you'd like to join me. Heavenly Father, we come before you, we submit to you and acknowledge that you are sovereign, you are the same before, you're the same now, and you're the same forever, so for that we appreciate your Redeemer and rebuild their qualities. Lord, we pray that in this spiritual battle that we know how all this ends, but give us strength and wisdom as we live each day today. We submit our plans to you and thank you for Jesus Christ, in his name we pray, amen. He is included with our discussion over the last few meetings on the noise ordinance, we wanted to bring that forward to make people understand that no action is being taken right now. We've had, we've had multiple meetings on it, we've had multiple committee meetings on it, we're just not ready to bring it back forward to the public for a first reading at this point in time, so we'll keep people updated and there'll be agendas with that, but no immediate plans to bring that back forward until we have some more discussions. Not included in the packet is the Festival of Trees is this Friday at First Interstate Bank, I believe it starts at 5:30 and the auction's at 7:00. Parade of Lights and tree lighting, that's December 2nd and December 3rd, coming up quickly here as Thanksgiving approaches. I think that's all I had for notes for my announcements and praise. Does council have anything to add? Item seven is Counselor's Corner. Counselor Zerps is willing to do that tonight, something we've included here to try to keep the public updated on things as we move forward and have discussions that council comes to the public meeting, still in discussion, things like that, so an opportunity for council to give a quick update, and Becca gets this one, so go ahead Becca.
Excuse me. Good evening, it's my pleasure this evening to present this meeting's Counselor's Corner. The first item I'd like to discuss briefly is our ordinance work update. I want to just give many thanks to our attorneys for their work on this issue. It's important work, and we all know that it's time and energy intensive, and we really appreciate what you are, what you all are doing. There was a schedule proposed at the October 4th meeting, and it goes through January and February of 2022, with the next discussion after this evening and the ordinances we're talking about. The next discussion will be regarding contractors and licensing and nuisance property maintenance code, so we just thank you both for, for your time and energy on that. The second point I want to briefly bring up is redistricting. The city is required by the state of South Dakota to redistrict our wards. The plans and drafts are being worked on right now, and they will be presented soon for discussion, first and second reading, because it will follow the same, it's an ordinance, so it will follow the same process as that. The city population growth, according to last year's census, of approximately 763 people may cause a difference from the current ward maps, so please be on the lookout for, for all of that information to be, like I said, presented very soon. As always, I'm thankful for our citizens' engagement and the questions presented on these and other important issues. Finally, I would like to encourage everyone to please check the city's Facebook and webpage for all of the upcoming holiday events happening in Sturgis. The mayor briefly touched on some of them, but there are really some fun things that will be going on, and I want to just say thank you to everyone here at City Hall, the Chamber, Sturgis Economic Development Corporation, the Downtown Foundation, and of course our local businesses for their hard work in making the holidays in our town so fun and festive. Thank you.
Thanks Becca. I had made a city manager's report, so I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Ransley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The first item I have is the sales tax update. The numbers I have are through the first three quarters of the year, so January through September. Amazingly, the general sales tax, which is the 2% that is paid everywhere, and so whether it's groceries or a hotel or anything else, it's a 2% sales tax, it's actually 6.5%. The state gets 4.5%, the city gets 2%, but with that, it has been a phenomenal year in Sturgis. The total amount collected is higher than the total for the entire year of every single year of Sturgis' existence except last year, which were only 213,000 less, and so give us about a month or so and we should surpass that, and $31,000 less than 2015, and so it's been fantastic. We were up month over month 21.4%, and year over year, we are up 13.4%. So the bar graph that you can see on the top there, it shows total collections, this is in the general fund, and so this is 1% of the sales tax, and then this would also be mirrored in the capital improvement fund and the equipment replacement fund, but we are at almost $1.8 million for the first 75% of the year. The line graph that's on the bottom shows the annual percentage change, and you can see that Sturgis has continued almost for 10 years now, I've seen an annual growth rate in sales, which is fantastic to see. You can see in 2011, we actually had a reduction in sales tax growth. In 2012, it was essentially flat with 2011, and then 13 was up over 10%, 14 was just over what 13's collection was. 15 was a fantastic year, it was a very, very strong tourism year, so our total sales tax was actually up 20%. Then in 2016, it did fall, it fell about 10%, but if you actually look at the bar graph, you can see that in 2016, it was still the second highest year ever, so even though it fell compared to 2015, it was still higher than all the previous years. But then after that, starting in 17, 18, and especially 19, 20, and 21, we have seen just record amounts of, of sales, which are fantastic for our local businesses, and also of course, very significant for the government of the city of Sturgis. The tourism sales tax, this is the extra 1% of sales tax that is applied for alcohol sales, hotels, and also restaurants. You can see that collections for the January through September is higher than the total of every single year we have ever had in Sturgis, even though we have three months left to go, we have received more than we have ever received for any year. Our sales tax is up 32.1% month over month of the month of September, and for the entire nine-month period, we are up 26.8% over last year, so it's just been a fantastic year to see. It has been very, very good, just about every single local business that I talked to has had a fantastic year. Last year actually was a very good year for most of the local businesses, and this year has actually surpassed pretty much anyone's expectations, so it's been a great year to see for the local economy. Going beyond that, payroll changes. We do have some new referees that are starting for us for our basketball program. Also in the downtown bid, we have three individuals that will be staffing our marketplace on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. That has been open for two weeks now. And then the police department, we have several volunteers at our animal shelter, and I also want to add that we have a new certified officer that will be starting with us in two weeks, Josh Bhutan, and his starting wage is $22.95. And the last thing that I want to note is on the table over there, we have some hard copies of our key performance indicators or KPIs through the month of October, we have that posted on the website as well. Are there any questions? I'm sorry, what's that? The sales tax, no, it's not yet. This was completed about an hour ago, so. It will be, yes, we'll put it on.
Thanks Daniel. Item nine is consent calendar, we have A through, and I got a typo to fix here, we have A through J. On subset E, it states, open container for parade of lights on December 2nd, I think that's supposed to be for December 3rd, the previous, and then the action, that's already for public hearings is for the 2nd. So that's a typo there, I believe, on E. But does council wish to remove any items from the consent calendar and discuss them individually? How about everybody in the public? A through J in the consent calendar.
Move to approve.
First by Jason to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any last discussion? There is minutes, so we'll go ahead and roll call, I'll start with myself, I'm yes, Becca?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Consent calendar passes unanimously. Item 10 is claims, questions from council on the claims. Lots of wastewater treatment plant. How about public discussion on any of the claims? Is there a motion? Bonnie, what do you have? Come on up to the microphone, please. Talking certain accounts or payments on accounts?
Oh, page three, I was looking at the furniture for City Hall.
We want them to hear you on the internet.
I'm by myself up here, I can unmask. Page three, the 17,000 for furniture at City Hall. That was a while back, but...
That was for, when the city moved into City Hall after the refurbishment, we had, I think it was $80,000 in the budget to purchase some new furniture, we ended up not doing the vast majority of the furniture because in March of last year, of course, we were starting down the road of a pandemic and we were quite concerned about what that might end up meaning for a lot of different things over the past year. I think the city has weathered the storm far better than we anticipated, so with that we did proceed with ordering the furniture that we were supposed to have ordered in 2020 that, that we just didn't.
And the $7,000 SMRI contract review, that's on page four, $69.90. Is that part of the stuff that we talked about last time around with option one and two and three, or what is that about?
That's Susan's.
Yeah, so that's for our outside attorney that has been assisting us with the, our dissolution of our contract with SMRI as well as establishing our own marks, and so those are some of the bills that come from her work and her firm's work.
So, this is claims, so this isn't the time to ask about the outcome of that, but will we talk about the outcome of that?
No new update at this point, but yeah.
Because wasn't it supposed to be a Friday or two ago that the answers were by?
In December.
December 5th, I think?
Oh, okay.
Yep. Is that right Mark?
Yeah.
I think it's December 5th.
Any other discussion on the claims?
What does Home Slice do for us? It says Home Slice Retainer, $3,500. What's their role with us, with that?
Home Slice manages our rally website as well as our rally social media accounts, and so the content that gets published, they do that, as well as when we make changes to the website, we talk to them and explain the changes that need to be done, and they do all the changes for our rally website and our rally Facebook. But the city's other Facebook and accounts, as well as the city's other website, those are done internally, but this is for the rally ones.
Okay. And then, I'm just curious about the police blankets for resale? That was, like, had an August date on it.
Chief knows. Go ahead.
Taking a nap again, huh? So, blanket. We purchased, member of our department that worked rally, if they wanted to purchase a blanket, they could. They paid us, paying the cost upfront, and then we're reimbursed by everybody, so it was actually an actual cost, which is an option for people to come and purchase or, or, sorry, blanket if you want.
Nice. And what is Lomar? It had to do with the Anna Street?
Yeah, that's the letter of map revision, and so when the city contracted with an outside engineer in 2015 to design the channel and to complete the channel, the necessary documentation was not done with FEMA at that point, and that was a need that was identified by our city engineer at the time, and so without having city engineers right now, we have had to hire outside engineers to complete that work for us, and so it's a data analysis that gets presented to FEMA that hopefully FEMA will adopt and approve at some point.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the claims, or is there a motion?
Move to approve the claims.
First by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Jason. Any last discussion? We'll go ahead and roll call, Michael, start with you.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
I'm yes, Becca?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Bills are paid. Item 11, one subset is the only public hearing is consideration to approve a special event license, this is for the tree lighting ceremony from 6 to 8 down to Rally Point, all needed paperwork was included, insurances and everything, so if there isn't any questions from the council, it's all included in the packet. How about public comment on this special event? Is there a motion? Becca in a second, by Dave. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, to no. That motion carries. Item 12 is reports, subset A is a pretty big deal that the ambulance has been working on here, but it's to change the employees from one category to another. Sean, I'll turn it over to you to give us the correct staff report here.
Good evening. As an ambulance service, we have looked at the retirement and retention of our employees. We find the employees are going where they can get onto Class B retirement, meaning they get 2% more, they can retire sooner. So I went to South Dakota Retirement, asked them why our ambulance service is not included in on this. In the law, it reads public safety. For some reason EMS is not considered public safety with that. They couldn't really answer, they said I would have to prove eight different items if we were to be moved to the Class B retirement. Those eight items included, we needed to be, primary duty must be to preserve safety of the general public, something that we do every day, day in and day out. The age, they felt that we could work longer than law enforcement and fire, explaining to them that we do the same things law enforcement and fire do. We're in the ditches, we're hauling the people out, we're doing all of those things. I can tell you, I've been hit and punched more than the back of an ambulance, so it's, there's no difference there. We're doing the job. It's our full-time responsibility. We're 24/7, 365. So we're doing that, we're proving to them that we're full-time. Our statutory duties, that it's a public service, and we are a public service all the way through. They told me that we would have to start by getting Daniel's approval. The next step would be coming to you as a city council, getting a letter of approval from you that you guys agreed with us that we should be Class B. I would then take that to the South Dakota Retirement. They would look at it, decide that I met every one of the things that they showed, you know, that we're public safety, that we are there defending life and limb, that our responsibilities are strenuous, our job is strenuous, we have to prove that to them. And so in the PowerPoint that was included, you guys will see how we laid that out. So we're asking for your support, we feel that if we can move our ambulance service to Class B, this would be just for Sturgis Ambulance unless it goes on to the legislature, that would be up to them, but I feel our retention can be greater, because they will not be looking to go to somewhere that includes fire to get the higher retirement and the retirement sooner. You'll see on one of the first slides, as a Class A, you are expected to work to 67. You'll see on one of the first slides, as a Class A, you are expected to work to sixty-seven. In Class B, they did have the rule of seventy-five, which included your age plus your years of service. This last year, it changed over and now is age fifty-five or forty-five. That's still ten years difference. So, and I just, as an ambulance director, as a paramedic, I do not see how our job is any less strenuous. We're doing CPR on the floor, we're in the ditches, all of those things. So I am here and my crew is here to ask for your support in supporting us moving to Class B. Are there any questions?
For the council and the mayor, how this essentially has kind of been brought forward is that within the city of Sturgis's ambulance service, as well as other municipal-owned ambulance services, oftentimes we're actually at a competitive disadvantage to other services where there's ambulance as well as fire. Because South Dakota Retirement currently sees that if you are a paramedic or an EMT that's hired by a fire service, then you're automatically a Class B member. And if you're not, then you're a Class A member, even though the reality is you're still a paramedic or you're still an EMT, you're still doing the exact same job. It's not inherently more dangerous because you're, or physically strenuous because you work for a fire department than if you just work for an ambulance service. The difference between a Class A and a Class B membership is that Class Bs allow individuals to reach full retirement pension eligibility at a younger age than they do at Class A. But in addition, there is a cost difference. That cost difference from employer standpoint is an extra two percent, as well as from an employee standpoint. So right now, the city of Sturgis contributes six percent of everyone's bi-weekly paycheck into the retirement pension, and then that's matched by the employee as well. And so what this would mean if they would move to a Class B is it would be an increased cost of two percent. And then the employee would also match that. That is an extra cost, but again, if you look at, if we make this switch, it will help us to retain some of our employees. We've seen in the past, some of our employees end up moving to sister agencies that are, say, twenty, twenty-five miles down the road, that are able to offer a better retirement package than we are. And they're doing the exact same job. It's just that it's underneath a fire ambulance service versus just an ambulance service. So that's where this request is coming from.
I feel the retention that we would have would offset that two percent, with not having to orientate new employees all the time, not having to do the interviews. So I really feel that the retention is huge.
Sean, how do you feel your chances are for success?
I feel they are good. I feel Aberdeen did this in 2019 and got it through. I feel that when they're given the facts, the gentleman that came in out and spoke with us had no idea about our job. He literally thought we drove an ambulance. He's like, well, you can drive an ambulance a lot longer than somebody can fight fire or somebody can wrestle drunks. And I don't think they, I don't think the community as a whole really recognizes what we do sometimes. And I think that once we present that to them, it will go through.
If you ever get the chance to follow, it's a sobering experience.
I have a question. Sean, is SDRS the final authority? They make the call on the change?
Yes, they do. And then they, how I read it, he gave me the six steps I would have to go through. I first had to prove his points, then I had to go to Daniel and then you guys, and then I present it to them and then it goes to their board. If their board feels strong enough about it, then they will turn it to the legislature to put it for the whole state.
Everybody.
Yes.
I still think it makes sense to push hard.
I do too. I think that EMS needs to be recognized for what they do and it's just like the safer grants and everything. Sturgis ambulance cannot get a safer grant that our sister agencies can get just because we don't have fire. But it's for first responders and they just do not recognize EMS. And I feel this is one step forward towards that.
Thank you for all your work on this because you really worked on this and it's definitely something that should happen.
Thank you.
Fair thing.
My crew deserves it. They honestly do.
Any further discussion on this consideration? There a motion?
I have a motion. I move to approve the letter of support for inclusion of EMTs and paramedics as Class B employees for the South Dakota Retirement system.
First by Becca and a second by Angela. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, to no. That motion carries unanimous. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you all for your continued support of the ambulance.
Subset B is second reading of Title eighteen, the zoning use on review and variance sections. Mr. Miller, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
So far, there's no changes from the first reading edition of the ordinance. And the primary, just a brief summary of the revisions are that there removes any potential reference for, on use on reviews from, or any written consent requirement for uses on review variances. However, it's more of an emphasis on notice and signage and trying to get out the word to nearby landowners. And one aspect of that is providing mailing notice to both the owners and the residents of the, within two hundred feet of the potential or requested use on review. Another revision is for the zoning amendments, section six of Article seven, and that has a substantial overhaul to be more in line with statutes. The primary, there is a written consent requirement within that, and that requires sixty percent of landowner or property owners in the aggregate area of two hundred and fifty feet with, from the zoning district plus the district itself. And the requester would need to obtain written consent from property owners within that area. And it also incorporates a means of appeal where if they're unable to obtain the sixty percent, they potentially could appeal to the city council and move forward with the process, even though they didn't meet that threshold. And that's, if anyone would prefer me to get in a little more in the weeds on the revisions, I can do that, but I think we sufficiently covered a lot of those, the last couple council meetings.
Any questions? Mike, you got a question? Go ahead.
I've got several. I don't have a page number, but I'm looking at the, at the ordinance. Articles, Article seven, I believe it's the second paragraph. Applications. Okay. The, I don't know what, South Dakota Codified Law eleven dot four dot five, how that comes into play against everything there with it. But what is the total aggregate of the, of the property owners?
Generally, to calculate that, it would be, you would create the boundary area with two hundred and fifty feet outside of that proposed district, say for a rezone. And you would have a sum or a total amount of property area that contains that entire area, and they would have to get property or consent from sixty percent, oh, landowners that consist of sixty percent of that total land area.
Assess value or footage?
Footage.
And the last sentence in that paragraph. "Any abstaining or non-reporting property owners will not be considered as consenting property owners." So in the last case that brought this all by, the county doesn't have a play and the church doesn't have a play as property owners?
In this case, they do. Because in the prior assessed calculations, using assessed value, they wouldn't because there's no assessed value in kind of church lands. And here, it's based off of square footage. So the church, based off of their square footage, would still be able to provide consent or not consent. But the person requesting the zoning change would have to get actual written consent, not just if people don't answer, then that's generally not considered part of that sixty percent.
So it's left to the people to do their due diligence and seek out the other property owners and voice their opinion. Because once it gets here, it's too late, correct?
No, once it gets here, if you have the sixty percent, then it moves forward to the process into the planning commission. There's public hearings regarding that where the public can provide insight. And then once it gets here, there's another, like if approved by the planning commission, then it would bump up to the city council for approval. And there's another chance for public input and no, to, for the council to weigh. And then it would be ultimately up to the council whether to approve that change or deny it.
I'm still skeptical because in the past, it has not worked in that fashion. Once, once the two hundred, two hundred and fifty foot circle was drawn, it was a positive result, you couldn't, you couldn't pry that out of anybody's hands with a crowbar. It was a done deal. And it, it went all the way through planning and zoning and it went all the way through to the council. And, you know, I don't know how we make it fair, but the property owners, the resident property owners were not considered in the last two or three planning and zoning use on reviews.
And on a side note, if, with generally any ordinance, if there is a twenty-day protest period that's after the council's vote, where if there, that's where that forty percent comes into play, where if it does pass, they can, I think, I believe it's that statute you referenced that actually points out the protest statute that allows for, if you can get forty percent of written protests, then it would come to a vote, public vote for that rezone.
Thank you. That's the first time I ever heard about that. And I've been coming to city council meetings for the better part of my life, since, since, I can guarantee you, since nineteen eighty-four. And not one time did I ever hear that statement.
Because generally, the purpose of that consent statute is to proactively address the protest, but it also provides safeguards on both ends where if you, say, the appeal does, like on appeal, it does able to get past the sixty percent, that protest, ability to protest by citizens is still applicable.
Well, the general public, I know there's other people here that would like to speak, I believe. If not, I have a closing statement from a resident who could not attend this evening.
Any other discussion on second reading? Come on up, Mr. Dahl.
Palmer Dahl, I'm, was part of the, some of this, it's gone through council or whatever. Some, one of the things, and I don't know if it's changed, if our attorney knows, but on the business that was going in on Main Street or whatever, it said in-home business. Is that the way it is now too? Do you have to reside in the home for the residential? Or am I looking at the wrong thing here?
Yeah, that, that hasn't changed, so. Sorry, I should speak into here. So the at-home does not mean that it has to be within the same structure that a person lives in. It means that it's a business that can be outside of a commercial or industrial district. So that hasn't changed.
Is that the way you read it?
Yeah.
One second, Bonnie.
My, Eric, just so you know, my concern here was simply, we brought a business into a residentially zoned area.
Because with use on, uses on review, that process would be the same. That generally wouldn't get the zoning amendment change. So there would still be, I mean, and there is process with the use on review that if there are complaints, then it would come yearly in front of the council. But with zoning amendments, it's a little bit different because you're rezoning the area. So if you are rezoning an area to open up for, say, businesses to come into a residential area, then the amendment would take place. If it's a use on review, which is generally an allowable condition, then that's more of an administrative decision.
Well, this, this is from, anything else, Palmer?
No.
This is from a, from a resident in the area who would not come to city council this evening. In fact, he texted me his resolve. "Mike, thanks for the heads up. However, this as a city is a big deal. And too many present council folks are in the back pocket of City Hall. It's quite obvious to me, I'd be wasting my time attempting anything, even though I, and I can't even say what he said next, I would be wasting my time." People don't even want to come to council on this type of stuff anymore because it usually goes against the residents in the area. And this is one of those particular cases that I'm going, for the life of me, I'll die in that corner of the block and I'm going to be here every opportunity I can to fight against this type of intrusion into residential zone property.
So Mike, was there a problem? I mean, a specific item that...
No, there's no specific problem with the way it's written. But the way I read it, I was not under the assumption that the city, city property, county property, church property had a actual vote. Because the amount of property that they own adjacent to the two hundred, two hundred feet or two hundred and fifty feet is more than, is more than sixty percent of the property of the block. So this would even create a bigger problem for, for resident owners, for property owners. So it's, it's not working for us, it's working against us. I actually believe this is going to help until you clarified that one statement. It's actually working greater against us because now you've got, in this particular case, JP Cycle, the Catholic Church property, that county property, is all adjacent to the two hundred feet. And they're in that, in that adjacent area, there are only, now there's three property owners, there's only two property owners that would oppose this in that entire radius. So in this particular case, this, this actually makes it worse for the people that live in those areas with that type of configuration. That's very saddening for me.
Well, I think the difference was, was when it was initially discussed and drafted first reading, now the second reading, was to give that voice to people that didn't have any assessed value. And that's why the purpose of the square footage was used. Um, I, I think there has to be some understanding that both use on review and rezoning is two separate processes and we kind of crossed them over a couple of times there. So go ahead, Eric, if you can clarify that.
Yeah, generally the, for uses on review, it's enumerated within the zoning ordinance itself. So there's really no change to a zoning ordinance. You're pretty much just carving out an already allowable exception underneath, within the specific zoning district. Well, a rezone would essentially be modifying or amending the zoning ordinance itself. And that's when the
60%.
60% would trigger. And same with the, uh, 40% protest underneath this similar statute.
I don't, I don't see any mechanism in play in this document that gives the two property owners on that block any chance of success. There's no way in hell that the, the figures would ever come down that, that Palmer and I would have a vote against and to the council or the planning and zoning.
In, in that instance, which is very difficult to try to write in ordinance for one particular instance. But in that instance, how it could have worked is if the planning commission would have agreed with the arguments that were being presented there and recommended denying that, that business in a residential area, which is not ultimately what the planning commission did. And that's ultimately not what the council did. And so you would, according to this, it would still be able to proceed, but it's not that it would be a guarantee. It's going to be up to the recommendation of the planning zoning commission. That's going to be reviewed every particular time. And then planning commission weighs what they hear from surrounding property owners. And that was an instance where the majority of the surrounding property owners recommended to go ahead and proceed. Not the two that were residential, but the other property owners recommended that it did proceed. And so, just like any other use on review, it's going to be up to the, the arguments that are presented to the planning zoning commission and what they ultimately decide on making a recommendation to. And then finally, it's going to be up to the council.
No matter how you, how you say it, Daniel, this was wrong. This was wrong, wrong, wrong. And I will never get over it. The reason I think it's wrong is because we had the employees at the helm. And I'm not sure you want to go there on this, but if it'd been anybody else, that wouldn't have happened.
There have been numerous at-home businesses that have been approved throughout the city over the past 10 years.
Let's, uh, let's stay dialed in on the second reading here on specific to the ordinance itself.
And may I have a, may I make a comment, please? In all due respect, I think that we're veering off the course of this second reading and that we are rehashing a vote that happened four or five months ago.
I think this is going
And this should have been a discussion that occurred at the discussion or the first reading?
It was.
This is the time where you, we're not going, you can't, we can't go back in and still call it a second reading and have any, you know, substantive changes. And I, I think that we're going down a road that is not
No.
attainable to this.
I don't disagree.
My second, my second point is, I believe that you're, if you're a citizen of this city, you have every right to submit your comments, your questions to your council members. And if you want it read publicly, then my belief is you put your name on it. Otherwise, it is nothing to me but hearsay. That's all it is. You need to have the courage to stand by your words and to present it either in writing with your name signed, or you come down here and you sit in that chair so we can have a conversation. Thank you.
I would like to go back. I, in fact, I'd like to go and call the question on this.
Is there a motion?
I, I move to approve.
So we have a call to question with the first and a second on the floor for second reading. We just had a, a second by Jason. So first by Dave, a second by Jason. Go ahead and we'll start with you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Those ones don't work.
Thank you, Bonnie.
I was trying to ask a question before we got to the point of vote. And I'm confused because the previous use on review, the weight of the vote was determined by the value of the property. And now we're saying the weight of the vote is determined by the size of the property? Is that what we're saying?
Correct, but not on the use on review. Just the zoning change.
Okay, so what makes the determination on the use of review the weight of the vote?
The only comment, there's just comments pushed forward by the surrounding areas is the only measurement there for public, for planning and zoning and for city council at that point from the report. So there is no weighted vote on use on review. It's simply the opportunity for comments to come forward and then for the sitting bodies to consider. In the past, if there was zero response from somebody, it was considered an affirmative, which that is no longer the case. It's so, simply only accept the comments given on the use on review. So they have to fill out the comments and send it in, either for or against it. That's the only way they're considered.
Okay, and I'm, I'm looking back on a use in review that involves me and I am not dissatisfied with the way it came out. So it makes it an easy discussion piece, but the use on review responses, um, Shawco was a piece of that, but they did not respond. So that threw them on the support side
Correct.
of the request for in-home business.
Now it would be nothing if they sent nothing in. And not a weighted 12% said no and 88% said yes. Simply comments made to be taken forward to planning commission, then ultimately to city council with the given written comments by the surrounding land occupiers.
So the decision is then, is now being made by someone who's not impacted at all by the decision? If it, if the decision comes out of planning and zoning's recommend, zoning's recommendation to the city council, then that means the people who are impacted by the review, by the request are not whose, they don't have an influence there.
Same as before, where it goes to planning and zoning first, those comments are weighed and they listen to public comment, whether it's the people being impacted or the landowners themselves or both. Then if that passes, it would go to city council. If it doesn't pass, there would be appeal process for the existing landowner, land occupier for the request.
Person making the request.
Correct. There'd be an appeal process. So that process basically stays the same through planning zoning, through city council.
So there's an appeal process either way? The, the requestor for the use on review or the neighbors who are opposed?
No, just requests, just the people requesting the use on review.
So if, so if planning and zoning recommends that it be approved, then the impact on me is not considered, I have no recourse then to?
Come and make, make your case at city council who makes the decision, ultimate decision.
And when you talk about, you're talking about zoning and then that is a weighted vote?
By square footage.
Is it square footage that is within the 250 feet? Or is that the square footage of the property that touches in any way the 250 feet?
The latter of the two. Right, Eric?
It would be the total area. Cause generally the, it would be more than just one single parcel that's being affected by that zoning change. It'd be the whole planning or whole zoning district. So it'd be the district plus properties within 250 feet of that district. So it's a fairly large area.
So the whole property, even though the whole property isn't within the 250 feet?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I just was
Yep.
It was pretty foggy. Thank you. Oh, I, I'm curious to know what the filing fee is on a use on review. Well, that's determined. Is that a flat rate or is that determined by?
It's a hundred dollars for the application plus the cost of the postage and return of votes.
For the
That was the only thing I saw was the certified notices. I didn't see anything about the flat rate hundred. Thank you.
So we're considering a second reading of title 18, title nine of title 18, I believe. Jason and Becca have voted in the affirmative. I am voting yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Mike?
I have to vote yes, even though it goes against the grain.
That consideration passes. It'll be posted in Black Hills Pioneer within the next few days. And once that's posted in the public paper, 20 days after that is when the ordinance goes into effect. Subset C is also in title 18. This is a 20, 2021-10. And I'll turn it back over to you, Eric.
Thank you. Uh, the current version is what was approved at the, with first reading, no changes. However, the oral changes that were completed as part of that were, are incorporated into here. So the ultimate, it's up to 21 days within a calendar year. If any more or any need is beyond the 21 limit, then you can apply for a permit for real, generally to relax these restrictions. There, the requirement for the porta potties and the special sanitation fee, that it generally and only applicable during the rally period and three days before and three days after and includes, or is only applies if it's over eight people for over three consecutive days. Otherwise, there, the requirement doesn't apply. The other primary revision is kind of clarifying the non-conforming, the pre-existing non-conforming use or the grandfathering of camping on vacant property. And that's the primary revisions. And I can get in deeper if necessary.
Any questions from council on the camping side of title 18 and the changes being considered? How about public comments, questions, concerns? What do you have, Bonnie?
It just wasn't clear on the porta potty issue because there is, there is camping in my part of town that does not have access to in-house toileting and bathing and whatever we do. If you are able to provide indoor facilities for your campers, are you required to have a porta potty?
The, go, go ahead, Eric.
The current language in the ordinance provides that if it's, even if you, as long as it's over eight people camping for over, for over three consecutive days during the rally, you would have to, even though you do have residential facilities.
Same people or at a time?
Uh, it's generally, I would say eight people camping. So I, I think, I don't think we're going to keep track of who's there and who's not. So just if there's
Well, cause the requirement
If you have nine tents there and someone complains to us and we show up and that there's nine tents there or nine RVs, we're going to say, yes, you need to make sure that you have a porta potty and you're going to be charged a sanitation fee.
But in the past, we had a limit of 19
Correct.
individuals at a time. You might have 25 people through the week, but you never had more than 19 at a time. I was always really
Correct.
careful about that.
This is, so if throughout the entire time, you have eight people or fewer every night, it doesn't apply to you.
Okay.
And again, we're not knocking on RVs. We're not looking inside tents to see how many sleeping bags there are or anything else. If a neighbor says, hey, there's a ton of people over there and it's causing an issue, we go over there and then sure enough, there's 10 tents there or if there's 40 tents there, we're going to say, number one, you can't have 40 because that's obvious that that's over 19. But if there's 10, then we'll say, you need to make sure that you have a porta potty and you're going to be charged a special sanitation.
Okay.
What, what does the special sanitation fee include?
That, that pays for the additional dumps that are, not dumps, I forgot what, yeah, extra pickups, I'm sorry. Rick would have thrown something at me. The extra pickups that are done each time and so
I'd be willing to pay the sanitation fee if you're going to deliver a porta potty and a tote.
No, no, it does not include the porta potty. And so that is for the additional totes or the additional pickups of the totes that are there. It is not for the porta pot. So the porta potty, you would have to pay for yourself.
Like we've never had, we've never even overflowed our dumpster in the, over a week's time.
Unfortunately, a lot of people do.
Other discussion on second reading of camping section of title 18? Specifics to Eric or comments or concerns? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a first by Dave?
Second.
Second by Jason. Any last discussion, public or council? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Posed a no. That motion carries unanimous favor. Roll call, please. Subset D is first reading of ordinance 2021-11. This is a supplemental appropriation to the 21 budget. Mr. Ainsley, I got, I've got you down for this. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayer. There are a couple items that are included here. It's not a, a very large supplemental. In the general fund, it's a total of $106,000. In the city attorney, there's an additional $6,000 that we are requesting to add to the budget. That's to pay for the additional wages for two attorneys. You can see that we do have two attorneys now. That's providing additional legal assistance with the ordinance reviews that we're doing as well as a significant number of contracts, both rally as well as just regular operational contracts, including SEDC chamber, ambulance contracts, different things like that. The bulk of the general fund supplemental is $90,000 for sponsorship. I want to make sure that everyone understands this is to add into the budget $90,000 for the potential purchase of the heritage marks and the Monahan marks that we had discussed about a week and a half ago. This does not mean that that's going to occur. However, that is still something that is being negotiated at this point and the end date, I believe is December 5th. And so if by December 5th, we are able to proceed, then we would need to make sure that we have the appropriate budgeted authority. If we waited until after December 5th, there would not be sufficient time to actually have another supplement. And so we would end up having a finding on the audit. I want to make sure everyone understands that does not mean that the $90,000 is going to be spent. That's only going to be spent if the agreement with First Interstate Bank is fully ratified by all parties. And then lastly, airport, an additional $10,000. And that's for the continued purchase of fuel because we continue to every month exceed what we ever anticipate. We are selling at the, uh, for fuel at the airport is more and more planes continue to make use of the airport, which is a good thing. Again, every time we sell a gallon of fuel at the airport, the airport is making a, a margin on that as well. Under the capital improvements, there's an additional $358,000 that provides funding for the taxi lane grant project. That has been something that thankfully we were able to get on the books for this year. We did not know we were going to be able to do that until several months ago, uh, when there was additional funding that came, uh, from the FAA that, um, was over and above our entitlement, um, funding. And so with that, the city fronts the money and then we end up getting the vast majority of it back, I believe about 92%. And so with that, the city fronts the money and then we end up getting the vast majority of it back, I believe about ninety two percent of that back. But again, we have to front the money, so we're paying for the project upfront. And then over the course of a few months, we'll get some of it back. Actually, we've already received most of that back. Then in the business improvement district, um, which these funds are not paid for by sales tax or property tax. It's through the uh, business assessment of the downtown property owners and additional uh, tax assessment that the downtown property owners pay for, as well as other initiatives that uh, raise funds for it. There's thirty thousand dollars for the Gold Star Memorial that provides funding for the site work preparations for the memorial. Uh, twenty thousand dollars that the foundation is has used to purchase additional decorations for Christmas. And then also seventy five hundred dollars for the hometown market. Uh, that was an initiative that was started last year, um, after the budget had been adopted. Um, it was so successful that we had several vendors that wanted to be open year round. And so now, uh, it is going to be open um, year round. And by uh, Memorial Day, it will be open six days a week. I don't think it will be open on Sundays, maybe it will. But it'll be open uh, the vast majority of the time until Memorial Day, it'll be open Friday, Saturday, Sundays. And that has been open for two weeks now, has proven pretty successful and is filling a downtown uh, building. Um, and again, the funds for that are uh, the vendor fees that are paid for by the vendors that are inside that, as well as other downtown proceeds. Are there any questions on this? The off-road rally is one of the events that's held um, in September. That's one of our shoulder season events. I I don't remember the exact date that it was held this year, I think it was a four day event. And it's largely funded uh, through the hotel bid district as well as some of the downtown funds. And it brought, I believe, over eighty different um, ATVs and UTVs that participated. There were uh, trail rides as well as poker runs and showing shine and all sorts of different events that kept them in town uh, during that that shoulder season to make sure that September was as good as what we reported, which sales tax was up significantly.
It seems like it doubles in size almost every year.
It it has been growing significantly and hopefully in future years it'll continue to grow.
Any other discussion on the supplemental appropriation? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a first by Kevin. Second by Angela. Any last discussion, council or public? This will be brought for second reading next meeting. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Posed to no. Please note unanimous Fay. Subset E is consideration for project boundary fence reassessment. And since Lisa's not here, Daniel, you get to do that one too, it looks like.
Sure. This has been a project that we have worked with, um, forgot which university now. Yeah, thank you very much to state where they um, look for potential um, vulnerabilities and um, all of our different IT uh, services. They've done it several years in the past, um, in doing so, they've uh, they've found very few, but they have found a couple vulnerabilities that we've been able to um, to secure. And it's good to have a a um, a trained outside third party to look at it versus just our own internal staff, which we do. But also by no means are we experts to find every way possible. And it's amazing to see um, the different things that they try to do. They'll send out malicious, you know, emails and spyware and everything else to employees and they probe different ways that they can access, uh, whether it's through our online merchant services and other things like that to try to get a part of, to hack into our system to see what's possible. And then in doing so, um, sometimes they're able to find vulnerabilities and um, it it's a free service that we're able to use that and make updates to our IT infrastructure, so hopefully we're more resilient in the future. Are there any questions?
I'll just make a comment. The greatest vulnerabilities in the cyber war is outdated equipment. And we must vigilantly appropriate funds to continually update our network operating platforms and systems. Because that's where that's where the hole is. Old routers, old malware. That gives them the access.
Any other discussion on this reassessment?
Move to approve.
Got a first by Mike to approve.
Second.
Got a second by Kevin. Any last discussion, public or council?
New project.
Sure.
And it's got to be like just a real pleasure for those students at P S U.
See what they come up with. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. That motion carries. Subset F is same as G, it's a discussion, there's no action out of here. But as uh, our city attorneys move forward with projects, we've uh, considered this point in the process to discuss food truck ordinance, so I'll turn it back over to you Eric.
Thank you. In the past few years, it there's been a substantial growth in food trucks amongst the city. So one of the goals of creating this ordinance is to generally try to regulate on where food trucks can vend and kind of different operational requirements for the food trucks. I mean, generally, the, one of the key aspects of this is ordinance is trying to balance it with the current temporary vending ordinance under Title thirty one and during the rally time. So one of the app the applicability of this ordinance is proposed to be between or is it, the temporary vendor ordinance is supersedes this ordinance over July fifteenth and August twentieth, because I think that's ordinance is better fit to deal with the kind of the uniqueness of the rally. And able to expand different, say like uh, vending in the public right of way and trying to eve also place all vendors on an even playing field during the rally. Outside of the rally, this ordinance would generally apply. And also during any special events, during like, say like Music on Main, things of that sort. The overall, generally, the ordinance limits any uh, vending to private property within general commercial industrial areas within the city. And however, there are some exceptions to vending on a public right of way for any city sponsored or city approved events, say like the Mustang Rally or Music on Main and Off-Road Rally and different aspects um, outside of the the overall big rally. One of the primary aspects of this is to generally create when like the hours that they would be able to operate generally during, that would end at midnight during the weekdays and two AM on the weekends. Uh, the vendors would need to provide monthly sales tax reports to the city to ensure they're paying s- city tax. The, there's a permit that lasts till December thirty first of every year and the cost of the permit is seventy five dollars. The ultimate purpose of placing that total is to try to balance the cost from the temporary vendor permit during the rally with an all year permit. And I mean, otherwise, it's they, these vendors must comply with all South Dakota licensers. So the maintains the health, safety, uh, cleanliness requirements. And I think if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
There's some language included in there that discuss anchoring gas trash cans down and, you know, things that people bring in, use, and then once they close up shop and leave, and I think there's good clarity there. I have discussion, questions for, go ahead Becca.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you Eric so much for your work on this. I do have several questions, so um, should we just go through the ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay. Section by section, okay. So my first question has to do with definitions. I got to thinking, you know, you have mobile food truck there and it got me thinking about like sidewalk carts or sidewalk vendors, and I know we have a section under sidewalks for our vendors. So I started reading that um, part of our ordinance. And um, I think that there's some discrepancies between the two. Um, an example is that the sidewalk vendor fee is not specified and I don't know if that is something that maybe needs to be looked at as well. So we're just kind of consistent and here is the food truck fee and here's a sidewalk cart fee. And then also um, it lists, you know, in here, we talk about noise not being um, you know, bothersome. In the sidewalk vendor cart, it listed at a noise level above eighty five decibels. So I think maybe, again, just maybe a question of consistency. So that um, my, those are my questions for that section. Moving on to um, section eighteen point zero five, point one nine, point zero five, operational requirements. Section three, part B, um, it states vending occurs during a city sponsored or city approved event. That, so that could include, for example, a private event at rally point, right? They could invite food carts down or food trucks down there, okay.
Anything with city approval.
Sure, okay, yes, thank you, which they would have to do to even have the event there, correct? Okay, thank you. And then um, number four, the last sentence, if requested by the city, a mobile food vendor must promptly provide proof of a property owner's consent to operate on the property. What does that mean specifically, like a written, just a note or like what qualifies?
I mean, generally, it would be just ensuring that the landowner actually provided consent and they're not just setting up shop in a parking lot. That's generally the purpose of that, I mean, it might be a little bit of surplusage where I mean, obviously, if they're on the property and the landowner doesn't want them on the property, the odds are that they're not going to be there very long.
Sure.
But I mean, generally, it's regulated to, the landowners regulate their own as long as there's sufficient parking for the both the business and the mobile food vendor.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, number four. The last sentence in number four. And then the final um, section of that in number thirteen, all mobile food vendors operating in the city of Sturgis must provide a monthly sales tax report. What is the filing deadline, just out of curiosity? I I apologize, I I don't know. Okay. Oh, okay, all right, thank you. And um, then finally, my last question is the next section, duration of activity and hours of operation for number two. We list the hours there for them to operate, but going back to ordinance regarding sidewalk vendors in fifteen dot zero six dot zero three, it says sidewalk vendors are allowed to operate from six AM to two AM. And it doesn't specify or differentiate according to weekdays or weekends. So maybe again, that might be something that, you know, um, we we just want to be consistent about. But um, thank you Eric, that's all the questions I have and thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
And I think part of that sidewalk vending stuff is associated with the rally and so that's probably why it goes till two for some of that, but I mean, it's. But. Fifteen. Maybe maybe we have to open up fifteen to and eliminate all that sounds. Yeah, it's 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 old.
It says um, chapter fifteen oh six, sorry.
Chapter fifteen point zero six added in its entirety entirety effective eight eighteen two thousand and ten.
So a long time ago.
Yes, quite a while.
In paragraph nineteen dot oh six, is there a particular reason that it's three days?
Uh, the purpose of it is to maintain the temporary nature of the vendor, food vendor. So it's to generally be a very short time period and then have to move on.
The majority of these food vendors almost kind of have routes where on Monday, they might be in Sturgis and then Tuesday Spearfish and Wednesday somewhere else. If they end up continually being on the same spot for months on end, that's where you start having the concern from the local res or restaurant owners that we had, I think, four years ago or so when we were looking at this of saying, here's a food truck that's set up here essentially competing with my restaurant. They're not paying the property tax and everything else that I am. So by limiting that, hopefully, you find the balance between the restaurant owners and the residents wanting more food options.
Other discussion, public or council? Come on up.
I just have a couple of questions. I I think this is a a good ordinance and I'm and I'm pleased to see that we're taking a look at this because I think um, as far as business goes, um, you know, things are changing and ever evolving. And so the more things we can do to accommodate a different type of business that's allowing a business owner to um, get started and maybe they will evolve into a brick and mortar option at some point throughout the process. So um, thank you for taking a look at this on behalf of our businesses. Um, I'm just on the the operational requirements on three A. And it says the mobile food vendors receive city approval. What is the process for that approval?
I mean, there's some flexibility with that and I think that's more.
It it would be a process where they would apply online um, through our our citizen serve uh, portal and they would apply through that, pay their fee and then hopefully upload the document that is the agreement with the um, property owner. That way it's known. And then with that, um, we would be able to know that uh, they need to be providing their sales tax receipts each month. And uh, then we would flag it if they haven't.
I'd assume we'd ask for sales tax number and also health, make sure the health.
The health department has approved it as well.
So fairly, fairly easy, basic process, okay.
Citizen serve.
Okay. And then my only other question was on the the three day, three consecutive days. So does that mean that if I park my food truck on this lot and then I leave for one day, I can go back to that same spot for another three days? There's really, i- it's not that specific.
No.
But three days in one location, I have to move and then I can go back or move to a different property or keep moving around, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Bonnie, what did you have there?
I was wondering about the the year-long license. And is is that on a deadline? You have to know in December that you're going to want to vent sometime through the year? Can that license be picked up any time of the year?
Yes, yeah.
Is it prorated in any way or is it always the same fee for any part of the year?
It's seventy five dollars, whether that's for three hundred and sixty five days or a hundred days. And so you can apply in January, July or November.
Okay.
But no proration, it doesn't prorate, it's just seventy five dollars.
Okay. And yeah, I I didn't get this one all read and I don't know where the sidewalk.
That's a, that's a different one. Beck was making it muddier.
Okay, I thought I missed one of the downloads because I.
Different.
Know where that was coming from.
Title fifteen, but there probably will be some clarity between the two now.
Oh, yeah.
Just because um, the the food trucks got me thinking about, well, what about a hot dog cart or a vendor cart? And where does that fall into the ordinance? So it was a rabbit hole, um, yeah.
You got me thinking about it too, you know, so I just thought I was. See, this is the stuff I'm talking about David, when I got out of my game. I thought maybe I missed finding that in the in the posting, so thank you.
Any other discussion on the proposed changes to ordinance on temporary food trucks? Nope. Nope, no, no action, just discussion, yep. None being heard. Our last item for discussion is the sidewalk ordinance. And Mr. Miller will let you present what you've got done to this point.
In twenty twenty, the South Dakota State Legislature made some substantial changes to the, generally, the sidewalk ordinances that regulate for the, for municipalities. And one of the ultimate purposes of revising this ordinance is to update with those revisions. So one of the bigger revisions is to, generally, the current revision requires repairs to be through a resolution of necessity. The proposed revision would allow, like, shift that over to oversight of the planning and development or planning and permitting department. And then the purpose is to expedite if there's any repairs, necessary repairs, the generally planning and permitting can send out a letter requiring the repairs. And then if the landowner disagrees with their decision, there's an appeal process that's been put into the ordinance that would eventually lead to the city council deciding the appeal. And generally, if the landowner refuses to do any repairs, then the council can pass a resolution of necessity to put a special assessment, and then the city can go in and repair sidewalks. The ultimate purpose of expediting this process is because the city does face potential liability on unrepaired sidewalks. So this essentially tries to speed up the process to get sidewalks repaired in a timely manner.
With that being said, over the years, we've talked about a grading system where larger lots and things like that, where it's not, doesn't follow under the necessity of what the ordinance was. My question is, is there some kind of grading system that we're going to work into this ordinance? Or is there some kind of situation where basically a landowner can go to the website and say, listen, I'm going to fall into this, and I'm going to need to fix my sidewalk before the city comes and makes the first contact? Go ahead, Daniel.
Yeah, the, the proposal, it directs people to the policy that the council adopted, I think it was last fall, that has a grading system based on topography, size of the lots, its relation to commercial businesses and schools and different things like that. That's going to be on whether or not a new sidewalk is required to be installed, not necessarily repairing a sidewalk. So if there's a sidewalk that's in disrepair and needs to be done, then planning and permitting department would inspect it and then send a letter stating it needs to be done. If the owner disagrees, then they can appeal that to the council. But if the owner just ignores it, then the planning and permitting department will try to make it, you know, contact with them and say, what's your plan to get it fixed? If they say, you know, we're not going to that sort of thing, then the city can repair it. And then at that point, assess the property owner with that. But when it does come to the point of new sidewalks or making sidewalks ADA compatible, then that would be based off the same grading scale system that was approved by the council. And I, I'm sorry, I think it was last fall, I don't remember exactly. And so there's already a working group that's working on coming up with the priority lists of where, kind of the first set is that needs to be done, and kind of the, the priority ranking of, of where some of those improvements need to be made. That'll probably be ready for the public, I would imagine, in January, something like that.
Don't you think that needs to be included with this discussion though?
And it's, it's mentioned in there that it's part of it. But the priority list or something is not, it hasn't been done yet. If the council wants that to be included with it, you definitely can. It, it wouldn't be part of the actual ordinance. I mean, that's not part of the language, but we could. It just means that you, we would wait a while for the ordinance to be adopted, if you want.
You're talking specifically about the city curb and gutter evaluation?
Yes.
And currently, that curb and gutter evaluation plan can be found on the website underneath the engineering heading. Because we're looking for it today to make sure it was at least accessible.
But again, that's, excuse me, that's just for the new stuff, what, there's new construction. My fear would be with this is planning and permitting throws a dart and says, we're starting this part of town, and this starts concentric circling out for repairs.
Okay.
I mean, that's, where do we start? How do we start there? Where, where's the line, where's the thresholds?
Sorry, I, I misunderstood the question, my apologies. As far as the repairs, it's going to be based on a complaint. So when we end up hearing from pedestrians that are walking or, or neighbors, that sort of thing, that's how it's going to start. We're not, we're not going to be proactively going through and trying to find every sidewalk and where that needs to go. We have a, a list of things where people have already made complaints saying, you know, I walk my dog here constantly, or I'm, I'm walking this direction, or I have a wheelchair, and I, you know, go through here, and I can't go on this block because of a sidewalk. Though, that's going to be where we start.
But sure gives us an opportunity to make a lot more new friends.
Which is why we're not trying to find a lot of places to comply. We already have enough that have already been suggested.
I have a few questions.
I remember something like this about forty years ago. And it was absolutely antarcalm, the amount of pushback that the citizens had. How dare the city tell us we have to fix our sidewalk? The city has never walked down my sidewalk. How can the hell they know this needs to be repaired? I, I've seen sidewalks that sit on an angle like this with tree roots. But, you know, it's, a lot of people don't have the money to do that, period. That's going to be the argument.
And, and what we've done in the past with situations like that, we do work with the homeowners, and we end up, a lot of times, the city provides all the funding for it, and we provide a zero-interest loan for several years so that they can make the payments on that. I know that when the mayor and I go to various meetings of class one cities, there's no city in South Dakota that does that. Every city that does it says, well, whatever it costs, that's what it's going to be done, that as well as the road improvements, and then it'll be placed on your property taxes and paid that year. You know, we try to work with people to say that if it's going to take you three years or four years to pay for it, that's great. I mean, overall, we just want to make sure that it's a, a safe walkway so that the people that are using it are, are able to use it and not hopefully fall and get hurt.
Okay, I had a couple of questions.
Okay, hi. Hi, Eric. My first question is, in section of the notice of necessary maintenance, repairs and reconstruction, fifteen dot zero five dot zero six. At the bottom of that paragraph, it says the requirement for a resolution of necessity does not apply to sidewalk, sidewalk maintenance, repairs, or reconstruction. But if we go back to the previous section, section E, that says a description of the lot or, or parcels of ground fronting or abutting the sidewalk, which is to be constructed or repaired. So do we need to remove repaired from that statement?
That was an oversight on my part.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Separated the, because initially, repairs and construction were consolidated, and that's just an oversight, I need to pull anything that involves repairs.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
No, thank you, thank you for that clarification. And then my second question is in the next section, fifteen dot zero five dot zero seven, installation required. The last sentence of that first paragraph says provisions for a sidewalk to be omitted by the sitting building inspector can be determined based upon the city's curb and gutter evaluation plan. My, my question is, I guess, if, if the council has to approve the resolution of necessity and a change in the sidewalk building material, why is it not the council's approval as to whether or not a sidewalk can be omitted? Why, why is there a difference for the inspector to be the one to determine that?
I mean, that's something that we can easily shift over to the council. We were just trying to, because the default rule on this is essentially, if you are building anything on a vacant lot, you're, you must build a sidewalk on that. And then also, it's trying to be in line with our curb and gutter plan or evaluation plan to try to balance that.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, I'm not advocating for, you know, either or. I was just curious as to what, you know, made the, the, the difference in that one. And then finally, my last comment is in regards to maybe something that we need to include. I went on to the city of Spearfish's sidewalk ordinance. And they have a section in their ordinance that is in regards to discharge of rainwater. And it states it shall be unlawful for any person to permit the rainwater from any building discharge on and over the sidewalks. Is that something that we maybe want to include? Just kind of, so we have, you know, everything covered? I can give this to you if you want, but just, yeah, maybe in addition, you know, that we, we want to look at.
I can easily add that in.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion on sidewalks. Come on up, Paula.
I just had a question on width of sidewalks and everything else. Can that be changed, or what is the standard width? I noticed we've got a number of new housing developments where they're very small, and it's hard for two people to walk side by side on the sidewalk. And I was just wondering if there's anything in there as far as width of sidewalks or anything? Or is that something we need to look at?
That'd be under title eighteen, I believe, is where that would fall, right? So.
There's, it, it depends on where the sidewalk's located, and also if it's adjacent to a curb or not. So if it's adjacent to a curb, then it's a wider sidewalk than if there's a boulevard as well as a sidewalk. So generally, it's five feet. But if you have a, I think, two-foot boulevard, then it could be four feet. And that's required to be a flat surface for it to be ADA accessible. There's a lot of locations where the sidewalk's wider than that. And those are locations where you could have some elevation change that's greater than two percent because you have to have an ADA accessible or clear pathway. But if you have an extra wide sidewalk, or then you can have some additional elevation change.
Yeah, I was just concerned on the width. So if you had a three-foot sidewalk, can you decide?
That's not, that's not the standard, so.
Other discussions. And again, I think it's a situation, excuse me, where it gets, we get crossed over between the new construction and falling into the grading of that and long separate two repairs and maintenance. So I think clarity there is important, yeah.
And just thank you, Eric, for all your work.
Well, I think these are, the reason we bring these forward for discussion is for, to spark the discussion, to get things happening and to have people talk about it. So if there's our, our future, something comes up other than just tonight, please reach out to somebody and let them know, and we can see if we can incorporate it in the first reading. So I, I think we have a schedule for these later on as we move forward. I think the first of the year is where these really start coming forward, so.
Hopefully, December, but it's probably going to be January when the first reading will come on for these two.
So some time to give it consideration and give more thought process to it. Any other discussions?
No, who knew sidewalks could be so exciting?
Brings aside item thirteen, all other matters before the council. Does council have anything to add tonight? Not on the agenda. How about anybody in the public? Not on the agenda. Come on up, Bernie.
I know some people may think going over these ordinances, you know, over our heads, or it's like, what is this all about? But I think that the discussion is excellent, and I'm so glad that we're, you're doing it and bringing it out to the citizens the way you are. It's, it's very healthy, thank you.
Thank you.
And the other question, but I, another question I have, though, is who is working on the redistricting for the wards for the city? Is that you, Eric, or?
Laura, our planning and zoning coordinator and our G I S coordinator is doing that. She has prepared several alternatives. That is going to be discussed at the next council meeting, which is December sixth. There's going to be, I think, three or four alternatives that are going to be presented. And then hopefully, the council will have a first reading of that on December twentieth, and then a second reading, first meeting in January, whatever date that is.
So is she the only one that's working on it, or is there anybody else?
There, there's been a lot of people, she's been the lead. She's had input from our attorneys, from most of the department heads. We've had some input from the legal and finance committee of the council and several, I, I don't remember now, six or three or six of the alternatives were provided to all the council to get their input as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anybody else with other matters? What do you have, Bonnie?
I want to underscore that support for the discussion because this is the part that I really value. This is the part that serves getting the public involved and, and hopefully getting them to come forward. This is the part I call kneading the bread. This is how you get a finer product. And one of the things I think that, that needs to be worked on and we need to be aware of is the climate in this room. And sometimes the questions I ask are for clarification for people with whom I've talked, that I know are listening out there, that don't have the background. And look how long it's taken me coming to these meetings. And then I lost a couple pieces with COVID and deaths and some other things. But, you know, every time I lose a week or two, I have to play catch-up again. It's not easy. These are convoluted and issues that run deep in this community. And while I understand what you're saying, Becca, is that we wish everyone were at that level of personal development, that they could take responsibility for their concerns, that they could step up here and speak. But it isn't always a welcoming climate, and people don't always have the skills to give them the confidence to do this. And I think we have to, it has to be a kinder, gentler world if you want that kind of participation. People have to be encouraged. And, and the climate here is not always encouraging and accepting. It's not easy for me to do this. I know you guys think I come here and I act, and this is not easy for me to do. And one of the reasons I don't bounce out of that chair for the mic is that I'm really scared of it. And it's, it's hard. And then I remember when somebody says, you need to be at the mic, Bonnie. Yes, I do, because I'm trying to speak to people who aren't here as well. But sometimes I protect me and forget about them. This is not easy to do. This is not what I do, and this is not what I get a lot of practice at. And I run into people at the post office I don't even know. I run into people at the grocery store, I don't even. I run into people at the grocery store, I don't even know. And they recognize my voice and they say, are you Bonnie? Do you go to those council meetings? And then I get, will you bring this up? And thank you for speaking because I just can't do that kind of thing. So I try to do my part. You know, Shirley and I started doing this as Jack Spratt and his wife. She was against everything and I was wide open for everything and there's some balance now with her gone. But this is not an easy thing to do, to come up and, and reveal what you don't know and ask questions that you think you should know. And, and then fifteen came up again and I don't have fifteen in front of me and there's no internet here, so I can't save myself if I slipped up on something. But I think the discussion is important. I think remembering how hard it is for the other guy to come forward is important. And the other thing that I see happening here, and here we go into ordinances again, and you know how much I have picked on ordinances because sometimes we say the weirdest things. I have never seen you guys have a first reading and not do your second reading on schedule even though there are huge fractures in the document yet. And I don't understand what's our hurry? Why not make it good? What is wrong with having a first reading and coming to a second reading and say, no, this isn't right yet? Even though that means it has to go back, what, for another write in a first reading? Is that what it, is that what it goes?
If there's substantial changes, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So what? Why don't we have time to do it right and well? Because when we forge on ahead, we just said to that guy, we didn't listen to you. You spoke it now, we gave it no time to think on it and we went forward and just ran right over you. That might not be the intent and that not be, may not be the fact, but that is the perception. And if we want this community to participate and quit flinching every time you pass something, the first thing we think is how is that going to affect me? And I did it tonight. What's it going to cost me to put in the sidewalk? I mean, make payments on a sidewalk? I'm not getting my taxes paid on time as it is. It's been tough. And so that's the first position people go into is what this is going to do to me? And they brace themselves against you because they're concerned for their own harm. I don't think we're communicating what I hear said here, but a lot of people don't hear, is that we're trying to work with you, we're trying to work for you and this thing of, of making a sidewalk alone? You said unheard of in other towns. There's some really fine things going on in this town and there are things that you folks as a council and not you folks, but the folks before you, you folks, the folks before them have done some really good work that I have seen go on here. And I don't go to the grocery store often enough and I only hit the post office once a day. So there's only so much word I can spread for you, but I do sing your praises and I do try to add perspective and I do try to encourage people to come forward. Sometimes it's easier to come forward to a, to a representative, to your, to your council person. But not if your council person is of another opinion and doesn't want to hear yours. So those are my insights.
Thanks, Bonnie. All I know is we must have a bunch of new residents if you don't know them. Right, exactly, seven hundred and thirty-six, I think it was, or sixty-three. What are the other input on other matters before the council? We do have a need to finish executive session. So if there's a motion to do so. First by Dave, second by Becca. It's eight twenty-six, we'll start at eight thirty-three, give us a little time. So we'll go to exec at eight thirty-three, thank you.
Dave was just waiting. He was, his teeth are closed.
Old man syndrome.